Very well.
Right. We call the order. You want to do a little bit?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so call the order, okay, let's start with the sergeant. Oh, right.
Why is that?
I was gonna say, did that happen? Okay. Sergeant, you tense. Fine. Okay. And you're going to call it. Which is strange. One. Oh. Yeah. I know. We're gonna go. Johnson. Here. Moen.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Bit of it. Sharon. Right, approval of agenda. It's pretty good to me, what y'all think?
Good.
You go through, I'm looking to approve the agenda. I need something. Yes. Okay, Henry, you're in. Right. Johnson. Hi. Moen. Sharon.
Hi.
Bit of it. Hi. All right, on to public comments, we have anyone here? Um, we have one for public comment, but I'm not sure, I don't see her here, so maybe she's remotely. I'm reading. And I do. No. That's fair. Don't want to be. And they just let you know they wanted to.
Yeah, I get emailed me a couple of days ago, actually.
Okay. Ignore me. I can't handle it.
He's going to be on site, actually.
All right, well. Hey, Rob, and then we're still on shoot, we can see what we can do after. Wow, if you heard. Hey. Um, consent to agenda. So we have our regular meeting and session meeting minutes, and then let's just go. And then today, except for incentive general.
But.
Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Bit of it. Hi. All right, excellent. Thank you. My first four minutes were for her.
Sure, so we wanted to invite Jamie Anderson, Officer Strider, to present just some up changes, some changes that we've had this school year. And as you all know, we've had an opportunity already to utilize this system just last week for emergency. So they're going to present to you all, and if you have any questions. I think it's important because it is such a significant change to our emergency system that you all can answer questions or to the community. But I just want to first start by saying thank you to Jamie, Officer Strider, technology, buildings and grounds. It's been a lot of work and effort that has gone into this, and also to our first responders, both fire and PD. Great.
Good evening, thank you for having us once again. I will give you this update, here we go. Uh, the security system is pretty much the same, I'll still be the director for the school district, but I'm full time now, so I'll be here forty hours a weekend, some a little bit. Officer Strider, she's back with us from Manitou Springs PD, she's our SRO. And we have a new security company called Baker &amp; King this year, very reputable, and they're labeled with black shirts that say security, so people will know what, who they are when they're on our campuses, and they will be armed. What's coming, uh, due to a lot of funding, we got some of the best grant, correct? Uh, we have new cameras coming to Manitou Springs Elementary and Upass Elementary School, which is awesome. And then we're going to take the old cameras from those schools and supplement middle school, high school, and silk, so we have a lot of dead areas where we don't have some camera footage that we'd like, we'd like, we'll be supplementing those. We'll also be putting in security vestibules up at Upass Elementary and Manitou Springs Elementary to give it one more layer of security before somebody can just enter our building and, and contact students and teachers and things like that. Mandel, let me talk about first responders, what's going on with, with all you guys in the sheriff's office?
So we've done, um, we met with some members of El Paso County SWAT team. They came and they did walkthroughs of a couple of our schools to identify security. Um, so we've been trying to address those, but overall, we do pretty well with the kinds of buildings that we have, as you guys know, they're older and there's a lot of complications with some historical, um, like doors, especially at the elementary school. But, um, we're working on those, we have, um, some new officers, so I have recently done walkthroughs of all the schools with all of the officers, new and old. Um, made sure that all the school keys for the patrol cars, we have it set for every car that goes in the glove box, they've all been, um, relabeled and painted, so they're easy to tell which key goes to school, because all schools have different keys and different internal keys and different external keys, so trying to make sure that we, um, that all of our patrol officers can access the schools if they need to, and they know how to do that. Um, so yeah, we did that, like I said, in all the schools with all of our officers, new and old. And then recently, we were onboarding the new, um, security officers with Baker &amp; King, so I did the same kind of walkthrough with them to familiarize them with the buildings. And whatever.
Joint training, some joint training coming up in the future, we're gonna be doing some cross-training with the SWAT team and Manitou PD, they're eventually gonna get to it where they actually do some exercise.
Say that's, but.
Yeah, that's not tomorrow, but the plans are being made to actually do some training, which is nice.
Yeah, so if we get any incident that happens at school, it's likely that Manitou officers will obviously be the first to respond. And then, um, EPO will probably be the next, because we all share dispatch throughout El Paso County Communication Centers. So yeah, we're trying to make sure that we're gonna have everyone respond, um, with a coordinated effort and everybody knows what to do.
Thanks, Maggie. Uh, if you haven't been by Manitou Springs Elementary since a while, last spring, Mandy, Maria, Masson, myself, Dr. Domenech worked with the city streets folks, and they were wonderful, uh, putting up new crosswalk signs with flashing signs, paint, repainted all the crosswalks in that area, just making it a lot more visible, and even putting the, uh, the portable, no, crosswalk signs in the middle, just to try to keep our kids safer. Same thing at Upass Elementary School, we've repainted crosswalks and done some things with the parking, um, drop off pickup to make it a lot safer for the kids and parents and teachers. Uh, we've updated our district emergency plans, I have to send it out now to get signatures from all our first responders and the school board, and we are updating the new, the school safety plans, because we have new staff on board and, and putting those pieces in place. Uh, the biggest, uh, thing that's gonna be able to talk about in a minute is InformaCast notification system. It's a way that we will notify our staff, students, and everybody if there is an incident going on at the school and what they're supposed to do with, when that happens. We will still be using the I love you guys standard response pro- protocol with all of these, hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Uh, most of you are familiar with them, if you need more information on which is which, you can definitely go to their website, um, just in nature of, of time here, we'll just go through that, we are using that, the only difference is, is they changed, the second one is all secure now instead of lockout. That means that there's a, uh, dangerous situation happening around the school, near the school, or in the parking lot, or baseball field, you know, or football field, or whatever, dangerous animal, uh, robbery suspect or something that's on the loose downtown Manitou, that means we bring all the kids and staff inside and we lock the exterior doors, continue with business as usual, but that used to be called lockout, but it was getting very confusing with the lockout versus lockdown. So there is a terminology change there. Um, the biggest change, I think, this year is, uh, the fire alarm will no longer be used to initiate a lockdown, because we now have this InformaCast system that you're gonna be able to hear in a few minutes and kind of see how we notified people when we're going into lockdown and other things. Also, we will not, um, we are not going to lock down if a fire alarm is pulled, so we're not gonna pull a fire alarm to initiate a lockdown, and we're not gonna lock down when a fire alarm is pulled, we're gonna evacuate all occupants of the buildings, and that is fire code anyway, so we'll be doing that monthly, starting here in September. We do have a couple of exceptions, and that's just in case, if we are already on high alert or there's a, we're in lockdown or secure already, and a fire alarm is pulled, pulled, the, the lockdown or secure is gonna kind of turn that fire alarm to stop, and staff and students are gonna be instructed to stop, assess, and react. If teachers have an obvious flame or smoke coming into their classroom, obviously they have to look at ways to escape, we just do this to slow things down, just in case there is a big incident or a shooter at the school that maybe has a partner and is pulling a fire alarm, and then he's gonna try to set people up if they, you know, have a large groups of people in one area, does that make sense? But, so InformaCast, Kat and myself and Matt, I went to a presentation on it, we already have the system that we could, we could add it to our Cisco phone, so it costs us a lot less money than putting in a whole new branding, like, system like a lot of the other schools have that have a lot of money. Um, so basically, it's a mass notification, notification system, alert students, staff, and visitors about any emergency or security event that's happening on our campus. Um, it also allows staff to initiate certain alerts for these emergency or security events. So it'll, you'll see in a minute, um, they'll have access on their cell phones if they download that, or their Cisco phones in their classroom, so if they're out on the track and they see wildlife coming, they can initiate that as well, and get all the kids in, in, in the class, I mean, excuse me, in the building, we can secure the, the doors, we'll still be communicating via radio with first responders and things like that. So the way the note, the notifications will be received on all Cisco phones, and it comes through like a PA system on their phone, and I believe we have a recording of that. Oh, we don't have it tonight? Darn it. Okay, so on Cisco phones, every single classroom and office that has it, the alert will come through, if their phone is turned off, it automatically overrides that, and the announcement will tell them what to do. The beauty of the system too is the alert will say, uh, lockdown, lights out, locked doors, out of sight, so it tells the teachers and students what to do under each circumstance. So that's really nice. It'll also, they'll get a text, I mean, um, yeah, text message on their phone, they'll get an alert, it's not like a normal text beep, it's an alert, a certain alert, and then they look down, oh, we're insecure, if they're off campus and we're in lockdown, then they don't come back to school, if they're out on lunch and things like that. For the, if you have ever been here during the day, the band rooms and the choir rooms can be pretty loud as the gyms with all the music and stuff, so the way those folks will be notified, that they wouldn't just hear a normal PA on the phone, we'll have strobe lights and then big, uh, horn, um, speakers that'll give that same notification. Um, in addition, if the staff member's teaching or anybody's on their laptop, Elizabeth was on a couple Zoom meetings and kept getting, we were testing, kept interfering, there's Zoom meetings, this is the alert comes right across the computer screen, which is awesome, so there's, really, there's no way that we shouldn't know there's something going on. In the areas that don't have the Cisco phones, we're gonna put speakers, Kat and her team is in the process of putting speakers on the exterior of the buildings, and also in the hallways, large areas, the commons and things like that. You already got them in there, yes.
It'll be small.
So these alerts, this is basically an internal notification system, so, you know, if parents and families ask us, are we gonna get those same alerts? No, we will notify families and, um, parents and things like that through our normal school messenger, but this is just the interior alert, because it's something that we need to take care of quickly, take care of business, and then we'll send out, Suzie will send out the alerts or Kat, or whichever way we choose, okay? Pretty cool stuff. Um, who will receive the InformaCast, the MSATC staff? Um, we also added it to, this is the really cool part, so Officer Strider gave us the list of the officers working days and some other, other people at the PD that would respond.
Just command staff.
Command staff, thank you, Mandy. Um, Manitou Fire Department, Manitou Springs Fire, they also will get these alerts on their phones, Green Mountain Falls Marshall, and also the Green Mountain Falls, uh, Trefita Park Fire Chief will also get it too. The cool thing is, we had a 911 call placed from somebody's phone the other day, it tells us where that's coming from, where sometimes maybe gets dispatched to a 911 call at the school, and nobody knows where it came from, but if it's done from the Cisco phone, it'll tell you exactly where, and the fire department personnel said they got the text before they were being dispatched, so that's how quick it is. They're like, I think we have to go to the high school, and then they got dispatched, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, I walked into the room when the, um, person who made the call was literally still on the phone with 911, so it's great, really exciting.
We're still using Safe to Tell, we're gonna teach, uh, third, like, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders at the elementary school, and then we're gonna get in the middle school and high school during advisory periods to kind of talk to them. Officer Strider is already setting up, trying to get students to help promote safety and, um, security measures at the school, working with, uh, seat council and some of the other deals, and we were looking at a grant now, uh, we just got an application from, um, El Paso County Department of Health, which is putting a grant out for, um, tobacco prevention, and part of that grant, Mandy already read part of it, part of it, it's getting students to meet twice a month, we're trying to get them to be components of, let's make it safe at school, and, and that's one piece of that, but we want to talk about using Safe to Tell properly and things like that. I think we had like fifty-three percent of the tips last year that were actual legitimate tips, so I am a firm believer in Safe to Tell, um, my first one was a self-harm situation, and basically we saved somebody's life, so I like, I believe in it, if they're, sometimes they're not legit, but I believe in the program, so. Um, we are gonna have an opportunity to talk with students and question and answers with families for twenty.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, so we're gonna do a Zoom meeting and try and do the same kind of presentation, because again, for, uh, since two thousand fifteen, the biggest change is on fire alarms, we're not locking down anymore, we're gonna evacuate and things like that. Um, when we do evacuate, we'll have a way to check attendance, by the way, I forgot to mention that earlier, they will have, and I love you guys, just be careful one second. The teachers will have an attendance sheet, and whether they use their class roster and kind of check, they will sit with their class, they're not gonna mingle with the other teachers, they're gonna stay with their class, and we're gonna put up this, so we'll know that Janie has everybody that she's supposed to have, or they might put up this, and it might be that they're missing a kid, or they have an extra volunteer, you know, visitor in the school, or somebody extra, and that's when we sort out on the radio, has anybody seen or does anybody else have so and so, it's a pretty effective me- measures, or way to do things. Um, the first fire note might be a little, you know, it's, it's gonna be our first one that we, we haven't done this since two thousand fifteen, so we'll see how it goes, and all we can do is keep training and getting better at it. That's pretty much it, Doc, do I have anything else?
No.
Any questions?
No, thank you for the internal work that went into getting this all done, I know it's a heavy lift, and I think, um, you know, I experienced the same training in my daily job, and so it's, but watching people still struggle with it because of the, you know, when you're in a crisis situation, and if you don't have this down, you're gonna make mistakes, and it definitely keeps people safer and keeps them focused on, just follow the process.
Thank you.
Follow the process.
Yep, and Matt Crook is not here tonight, but he, Kat and I were really excited at D11, because this is gonna be really cool, and he's just kind of going like, oh my gosh, because he had to do all the programming, all the free stuff, so he is a big on of a button. And with that, we're down, so we just get to say, look how cool this is, he did a lot of the work, thank you.
Any, but, any other questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
We hope we don't have to use them, but.
Yeah.
We're in the, we're in the, we're in the.
All right, okay, so we do have, um, the, oh, Brenda, so we didn't have our person who wanted to come and was coming, are you all comfortable switching the agenda up to?
Yeah.
Okay. I put a number in the agenda, don't you?
Yeah. Um, let's see, um. Would anyone move to add public comments to? I guess we'd have to create our own G18, would that be correct?
I think you'd end superintendent's report. We don't usually end that report.
Also, I was gonna say, do you want to just finish the superintendent's report and then do public comments, because that, then you're not moving out of it.
Is that okay? Remember, you're gonna be here.
I'm gonna, we moved public comment to follow the superintendent's report and before policy review.
I don't think you have to do it yet, until end of superintendent's report.
Fairly, and superintendent's.
At the end of it, then you can make that.
I don't know if it matters at all. Pacing our efforts.
I'm looking at John.
I missed the conversation.
It's okay, it's not a big deal. We don't, we don't need to really page names, hold on, we, we can serve you if you want to.
So we'll get there when we get there. Okay, so back to the superintendent's reports, sorry, Elizabeth.
No worries.
Fourth quarter budget reports.
So I'm gonna just run through fourth quarter really quick, because fourth quarter is just kind of, it's something we have to do, but these are unaudited numbers, we're going through the audit, the auditors are out here in two weeks, then we go through all the numbers, and then the final audit is presented to you guys in November, so this is kind of just the, the numbers before the real numbers, so I'm just gonna run through and highlight a couple of things on here, the first is our general fund, and so we brought in, um, significantly more general fund, if you're looking at this, than we had budgeted, the reason for this is that the COP, so we received that four million dollars from the COPs in, um, June and, or May, in May, and so we got that money, we never had that in the budget, but that money will be spent accordingly, and has been in, built into the adopted budget for this year, so that's why that number looks a little bit off. Um, and I'm gonna run through, but if you have any questions, stop me. Um, funding, the, the other one that I wanted to just talk about is food service, and, you know, the past two years for nutrition services has been kind of crazy with all of their, um, with the free lunch and serving one, serving a lot more students than anticipated, and so we ended, um, both revenue a lot higher than we had budgeted, we really could not anticipate the number of students that really took school lunch, it is dramatically higher, I mean, last year especially, I think it just kept growing and growing and growing, the, the kids loved what Paul and her team put together, and we just had great buy-in there, so, um, the revenue from that, because you're getting reimbursed for that, was significantly higher, and the expenditures were a lot higher than we had anticipated, because we just kept, it just kept growing, and then also in the spring especially, but throughout the year, food costs went up significantly, and so we had those two factors that kind of bounced off each other, thankfully, we were getting reimbursed at that higher rate because of the cost, but, um, it came in higher than budget, but we do appropriate our reserves, and so really, when we have our full appropriation, we are fine, because it, it went into a little bit of their reserves, but overall, with the, um, increase in revenue, it, it didn't affect anything. Um, grants was normal. There, and then the last one I want to touch on is capital reserve, and this is also a little bit of, um, of pandemic-related things, we, we ended the year really low, um, carrying a lot of money over, and that's because some of the summer projects, remember, we always do the projects either at the beginning of the year in the summer, or the end of the year in summer, and a lot of those projects that were gonna happen in the summer really got delayed and got pushed into later summer because of, um, just supply chain issues. One, one example is the high school front office remodel that we're doing, we, the permitting issue, we just kept, I mean, I feel like in the summer, we kept saying, Pete, where are we with our permit, where are we with our permit, so it's just kind of waiting on permitting, supply chain, things like that, so it's still projects that are going to happen, they're just happening a little bit later than it is. Any questions? All right. Thank you, guys.
Doctor.
Uh, this is the monetary report for EL 1.0, general executive constraints. Um, as I typically go through these, I, I don't read them line by line, I like to see if you all have any questions about anything that's stated here, um, I think really just adding on to the work that we continue to do, um, and then that specific focus on SRR grant monies, we put this in this monitor report, while it will show up in another monitor report around financial, financials, but, uh, this is really because we have to make sure that we're following the federal and state law, um, state expectations there, and then the last part, um, I did add that I work with the litigation team, and I know that's been hard work, but, uh, just working closely with them, and then you'll see on page six, I just updated all the, the policies that you all have worked through, and I think it's, it's really nice to see that from years of, of work, I think that when, when I first started in this role, and just, that has been one of the policies, and you all, I really believe tackled a lot of policy work that's helping our districts to move forward, and then, uh, tonight, we're gonna continue to, um, uh, work that we started back in the spring, hopefully you all can approve some policy tonight around that policy G that we know caused a lot of concerns there, so that's the updates from this executive limitation reporting.
And just speaking about SRRs, I know, unfortunately, we didn't hit as much as some districts, just not even because of sheer numbers in Manitou, but also just how it was funded and for our students and such, um, how are we doing on spending that down?
It's not been a problem, unfortunately, um, we wish, other districts can't spend in, they're.
Right.
They're asking for requests to extend it, and it's not been an issue for us.
Yeah, um, SR2 is pretty much wrapped up, so we have spent the majority, about half of SR3, and really, summer of twenty twenty-three, it'll all be spent.
For, yeah.
Powering into it, yeah.
Okay.
Not enough money, that's for sure.
No, I know there's some organizations that receive quite a substantial amount.
Yeah.
Any questions?
And the last meeting, we talked about, um, you're gonna introduce the new HR person, and that looks like that would fit, uh, as far as, uh, the agenda goes, probably best because in the second paragraph, it talks about, in most cases, the human resource department handles and monitors violations when appropriate, needs to be shared with the board of directors and executive sessions, so we have a new HR person, you talked about introducing.
Yeah. They're gonna present at the work session, yes, someone's.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'll save my questions for that.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to get me those questions in advance, that'd be great, so I can give those to her, that'd be wonderful. That's right.
That's good. List.
Any other questions? On this action from the board. They have a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept monitoring report, EL one.
Second.
Johnson.
Hi.
Moen. Sharon.
Hi.
Bit of it.
Hi.
Hey, hey, Nashville.
Okay, Eric, can you call me? I can tell you, as they're getting set up, I was over at Manitou Elementary School this afternoon for their staff celebration of these outcomes, there's a lot to, to recognize for the school staff for what they've done over these years, and I know that they're gonna speak to that, but we just really want to celebrate our educators and what they've done in really hard times.
All right, so, yeah, Colleen and I are gonna go through, like, some of the, some of the data, the only piece of data that's really, that's really missing for us at this point is the growth data from, um, CMAS, and, uh, we have some of that, but it's, looks a little different than it has in the past, and so we haven't had the time to thoroughly analyze that just yet, but.
Is that, that data's coming out soon from the state, it's, they said before the end of August.
Yeah, so.
Yes, wow.
Yes.
Right, so these are the four assessments that we're gonna talk through, uh, Wida Access for LLs, Colorado Measures of Academic Success, SAT, SAT Suite, and then Advanced Play Street. So this is just a brief slide around Wida Access for LLs, as you all know, we've talked about this before, we have a very small population of students that take this assessment, and, and as such, uh, we, you know, have not included that specific data, because for this specific year, we had four students that, that took this, and that's obviously very personally identifiable, and so we, um, chose that out, chose to leave that out, but, um, one of the notes that we did make here is that one of the areas that's needing the most growth uh, is, is speaking, which really aligns tightly to the work that all schools are doing around, um, set of strategies for language-based classroom, and so we're excited about the work that's been happening, um, just kind of on that note, uh, Nancy Motley was here at the high school doing training with the staff, and there was just a lot of energy, you know, here with the high school staff, uh, around those strategies they're learning. Uh, so Colorado Measures of Academic Success, uh, the, the CMAS is a suite of assessments that's administered in third through eighth grade, um, to all students enrolled in public schools, this assessment, so you made it to the level of mastery a student demonstrated on grade level, or academic standards in English, Language Arts, Math, and Science. Okay, so the next series of slides is, uh, a, a few different views of, of the data we have compiled from this, and then some historical views, uh, so this here is for this year's, uh, third through fifth grade, and this is the percentage of students that have met or exceeded the standard. Uh, so this here is for this year's uh third through fifth grade, and this is the percentage of students that have met or exceeded the standard. Uh, so you can see here uh in English, Language Arts, in all three of the uh elementary grades, we have met or exceeded the state average for percent uh meets and exceeds. Um, math is a little bit different story, and we're working, you know, hard to uh, you know, to shore that up. We've had a couple of different trainings so far with our elementary mathematics teachers, one with middle school. Uh, we have another one on the horizon with middle school folks, and so all those teachers have been really engaged and working hard on on problem solving around how can we contribute most to that uh that learning for students. Uh, so this is the sixth through eighth grade, a similar story. Once again, uh we see in these three grades, English, Language Arts, um a lot to celebrate. Uh, you can see specifically seventh and eighth grade, uh eighth grade seventy, almost seventy percent of our students meeting or exceeding the uh the standard of of those, of those standards in those grade levels. That's a, that's a huge, huge deal. Uh, so, and then also math data is another, you know, another highlight of of a very strong percentage of students that have met that, that's that learning target. This here is uh third through eighth grade, English, Language Arts. The last five years, I know it's fairly small, and I know you all have been able to look at it already in your packets. Uh, but so, you know, we see some variation here and there, but in a lot of grades, we see a a good trend of of upward growth and the trajectory that we want to to see moving forward. And so here's similar story for math. Uh, some ups and downs over the last five years. You'll notice, obviously, we had, you know, twenty twenty of our, no one took the assessment, and then only half of the grade levels took it last year. So this, excuse me, in two thousand twenty-one, so then last last spring, everybody getting back into that, into that groove. So here is kind of, this is just a a number of slides that by assessment, uh just breaking down into the percentage of students that fell into each one of these categories. Uh, so to those points, I know one of the things that we are really looking for as you go throughout these years is to the decreasing of the dark blue on the bottom, right? And then the increasing of the yellow and the white blue on the top. And uh in a lot of the specific assessment, uh assess grade levels, we, you know, we were starting to see that happen. So uh if there are any specific questions about these specific assessment, you know, uh results, we can look at that here in just minutes. I'll go and kind of go quickly through these slides since you have them all there in front of you. Man, little story. Right, so a note about science for fifth and eighth grade. This is the very first year that the twenty twenty academic, uh the science academic standards were assessed, and as such, performance levels were not set yet. So we did not have the same type of data, the percentage of students that fell into these various categories based on their scale score as we did for the other. Um, as the other, we just had individual percentile rankings essentially for student scores. So each student essentially just was assigned through their individualized report, you know, where they fell out as a percentile rank. Uh, so obviously, we didn't share that here, you know, for obvious reasons, but um next year, we should have that based on the data that I will have gathered for this, for this spring. So I think that is, that is kind of the, the end of my, you know, my estimation of of CMAS. So before I turn it over to calling in for some of the high school assessments, so are there any questions that y'all have around some of those slides or data points or just kind of directions that we're going around those things?
Well, one, I appreciate the visualizations being correctly labeled and correctly uh trade on the graphs using hundred percent as the metric instead of having them um excuse to to the data. Um, that being said, thank you, because I know that's time on something. Create these because states will just give this out, they're just a lot of data now, then we have to do something with it. So I appreciate the time that women are creating these, and I hope they're shared widely because this good results. Any, maybe that's the question, then, what, how is this shared out? What's the next steps for you and your department?
Well, we have um shared it with the uh administration team, you know, the leadership team, and they are sharing it out at the, at building levels with their, with their, into their staff, and he's like, was mentioned. Uh, she uh got to be a part of administrative elementary, uh so that's a major way that they're doing it.
Once we get the SPF and ZPF and the growth, then we'll pre- preside, pre- present that to parents and to staff. And so I go one, one head.
One.
Out of the just years of data. It's hard when it comes out.
What's our first uh participation rate for any of the assessments? Did we go back to a fairly rigorous standard of ninety-five percent, so we've met the state requirement this last, that last year?
No, in some grade, well, some grades, yeah.
Yeah, some tests, yeah, some tests now, so I would say it's a little bit of varying, but I mean, a lot of, a lot of them, we had, what I would say, a pretty high percentage, you know, in the mid nineties for sure. Um, definitely not at ninety-five percent for all grades or all tests, that's for sure.
The, the eighth grade test historically is one of the parental exclusives for because they take the PSAT eight in our district, but then it leads to that SAT suite of assessments at the secondary level. So it's an eleventh grade science, I would say those are, those are the ones that are outliers and not just in Manitou, kind of statewide, but those are the two big ones.
That was going to be my next question about PSAT and SAT about our participation rates, because we do comparative analysis. You know very well that some districts don't test all their students purposely.
I, I think that's certainly not our culture, but I think what we've done around the PSAT suite of assessments through um and really saying that this, this is the data that we then use for our staff and PLCs and that kind of thing, I think that helps too, that parents and kids aren't chasing different things, and our staff is not chasing different things, I think that helps.
Yeah, that is, that does provide clarity, thank you.
Anything else?
Um, so just really quickly, as a quick recap of the uh S S suite of assessments. It's, we give it in the fall to all of our students here in Manitou Springs School District. Um, we give it to all kids, we pay for it, and we do it on a school day. It's really an equity and access thing that goes back about nine years um from a plan that was made. And then, of course, the state, nine, ten, eleven, that is the state assessment for high schools. And then we give it again at um to eighth graders in March. Um, in eighth grade, these assessments begin the career called readiness conversation for students and families. Um, the eighth grade, those scores are also shared at the high school level. Um, and they really do that a lot for course placement, especially in areas like mathematics. Um, but it also allows for something called AP potential. And so the, the scores that are sent home to kids and the conversations that are had with families is, hey, based on this score, college board can predict that your child is ready um to take an AP class. So there's a lot about access and equity there that I think is pretty important, especially for some of our first generation college students within our community. The assessment is comprised of math and evidence-based reading and writing subtests. Um, the big piece, we've talked about this a couple of times, is that PSAT eight and PSAT nine test two math sections where the PSAT ten, the NMSQT test, which is in the fall, and then the SAT have three sections of math. And that, those tests add what's called passport to advanced mathematics. Um, so sometimes we'll see a dip in between that kind of eighth and ninth grade and then that tenth grade level. Um, just because there's that increased in expectation around uh math and math fluency, being that it's fine. Um, overall, our numbers were higher this year just because of the impact of COVID in the last couple of years and and families choosing to do online or homeschool or those kinds of things. So again, some uh percentage of historical data, um this is the PSAT percentage of students meeting college readiness benchmarks. So we're on the blue, Manitou Springs Middle School, bless you, and the orange is PSAT eight, so it's the state. And I use the state loosely. Um, most of the schools in the state of Colorado that give the PSAT eight are private, not even charters, through private um because they don't have the CMAS, they don't have an assessment. And for many of their stakeholders, something like the SAT in eighth grade makes a lot of sense. Um, so for, for us, I, I always say, don't worry so much about the fall, kids have never seen any assessment like this. Um, really looking at that growth from fall to spring, um and kind of uh where that looks. I was incredibly happy to see the spring um evidence-based reading and writing looked a lot similar to the CMAS evidence-based reading and writing. I thought that gave us some really good data when we project. Um, and I was incredibly proud of the work that our teachers had done in math. Uh, we know math is sequential, we know that was a loss over, over COVID. Um, so our kids just really working so hard and our teaching staff working so hard at Manitou Springs Middle School around evidence-based reading and writing and that. There's a lot to celebrate there with our kids, families, and especially our teaching staff. Um, PSAT nine, this began the percent of students meeting college readiness benchmarks. Again, the fall, we're really unique in how we do the PSAT nine. Um, so I say the state again kind of loosely, but then when you look at the spring, um here, you can see that we are beating the state on that PSAT nine assessment, which all kids take. So a lot of credit to our students and our teaching staff here at Manitou Springs School. Uh, PSAT ten, again, this is the percent of students. So here, when we're looking at the spring, um you can see Manitou in the blue, beating the state in both areas. Um, this in the fall, um if we look at the fall of twenty twenty-one, um the state to me needs a lot more. This is the National Mayor Speller's fifth test, this is what juniors typically take, and this is the top ten to twenty percent in the state. Um, see, we compare our kids, they're doing incredibly well against a very small group, to Tina's point, where we give it to all of our students. This is the SAT, this is the group I've been the most worried about this whole time. These are the kiddos that when COVID hit and we went on lockdown, were freshmen in high school. Their sophomore year was um a year of quarantines and hybrid, a lot of really hard things. And then last year wasn't perfect either by any means. Um, and so this was the group of juniors last year, this year seniors that I was the most concerned about. Um, and so looking here in the spring of this, your evidence-based reading and writing, I mean, truly destroying the state average, um and here in math, beating the state average. Um, and I was incredibly proud of our, of our students and their grit and resiliency, and of course, our incredible teaching staff. Um, this is the crew that, if you think about, if they were freshmen taking algebra, bam, in March, all hydro blues, they're in geometry, their sophomore year, algebra two this past year, and they take this test in April to see what our teachers and our students and families did is pretty remarkable in, in really getting as much access and opportunity for our students as humanly possible through the three hardest years, truly. AP, AP is not a state assessment, um but this seems like a good place to put it, as we get college board data in July, AP. Manitou Springs High School has been administering AP tests onsite since the spring twenty seventeen. We've talked about this, how we kind of beg for it and still a little bit from Chaimout High School in the past to have our students take it there. We brought AP here um and started giving tests onsite in twenty seventeen. And the high school has been offering AP classes since the eighteen hundred school year officially, meaning that they've been endorsed by college board. For twenty twenty-one school year, we added two AP classes, AP computer science applications and AP Spanish. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we added one AP course, AP chemistry. We've had an increase in students enrolling in AP coursework and tests past five years, which is directly linked to our core values, and really just teachers digging in and kids and families digging in with a little bit of faith um that they can do this and really encouraging them when they can. Um, the dedication of the teaching staff, staff going professional development commitments to our students should be celebrated. AP training happens in the summer, that's when it happens. And so to commit to that training in the summer and then take all of that great networking that you do and all that great information and going back and really working and preparing for the fall, and then the ongoing mentorship, mental health mentorship, academic mentorship, and really encouraging kids that you can do this, don't quit, you can do this. Um, it's just, it's extraordinary to watch. Um, so I'm really, I'm really proud to help watch the program. Historical advanced placement data, you can see this graph, I know you have it in front of you. Um, again, we took a hundred and ninety-eight exams. So that's the potential for a hundred and ninety-eight exams times about four thousand dollars, which is the average cost of a of a three-credit course at PCCS. That's incredible scholarship money that our students and our families are taking advantage of, which is in the halls of this building. Seventy-four kids had an AP score of a three or higher, that's college credit. It's guaranteed college credit in the state of Colorado per state statute. And sixty-seven point eight-nine percent of our kids scored a three or higher, which means they got, they got college credit and a college fellowship. That's huge, very good. Our teachers and kids, incredible. Just another graph, it kind of shows a similar thing. You can see the increase um in the percentage over time of students that scored high. Um, twenty twenty might be like, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, college board has a lot of questions a little bit about what happened that year, but so we're, we'll take it, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Any questions about AP or the SAT, SAT suite of assessments?
Great data.
We had work.
No, like, I don't, it represents a lot of time and energy to families, kids, as well as staff.
And I appreciate the multiple use of different um diagrams to demonstrate, that's really helpful. And again, we have to spread the best ways to create this. I don't think too many districts are. And two, I just, I mean, during college readiness does not start in these halls. It starts at New Pass, Manitou Springs Elementary, where kids have a love of learning and a love of reading. Those reading scores are directly linked to, to this work that's being done, so I don't need to tell this group, but when you see a teacher.
Eric and I have looked, started to look at the growth data, and we're seeing some, some big growth, especially for some of our subgroups that typically have not seen that growth. So once we get the SPF, that's the school performance framework and the district performance framework, we'll be able to really dive into where the growth that we're actually seeing, seeing as we look at our strategic outcomes. New Pass Elementary School falls into that awkward category because their N is so small that we, we don't ever get those growth measures, but really some, some positive outcomes. So kudos to the new ship um for every twist and turn to our students, staff, and families. There's a lot, a lot to say.
And I look for it next month when I come up for CTE, then I can talk about some other things to collaborate and talk about all kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Danny Trammell and Jane Squires will present on Connect fourteen and partners for Health of Choice, thanks all.
Good afternoon or good evening, yeah. That goes up.
Just reenact the projects.
Yeah. You'll do all the dance classes. I'll sing.
I meant to ask about that, I apologize for that. Just send it to Kat real fast, please. Sorry, their presentation's really.
Um, I think that you have found, have you found my email?
There it is. Thanks. All right, so if we had a theme for all after-school summer programming, it would be connection this year uh because we had our first time in over two years where we were truly in person all year long with our students uh this fall and spring uh for Connect fourteen, which is really awesome. So in the fall this year, we had seventeen classes offered, a hundred ninety-seven students enrolled. In the spring, we had sixteen classes with two hundred twelve students. So we did see some growth in student population, which was awesome. Oh, this is so typical for me. Technology, you have technology problems. It's just riddles my life. So some moments from Connect fourteen really awesome this year. Uh, our robotics, uh, elementary robotics took second place and robot design took second place in core value. Um, app competition, which is really awesome. Uh, first year with part-time Connect fourteen co-administrator, uh, Sofia Marchando, who is now rocking it at the elementary school teaching. Um, increase in student enrollment, which we talked about, and then of course our community partners. Flying Pig Farm or or Myo Dance Company. Sorry, that's incorrect. I didn't put up the, it's a wrong spelling. And uh, Concrete Cow. That occurred at uh Fab Lab, which occurred at the Manitou Arts Center. Um, classes occurred at Flying Pig Farm and then also at um all four of our schools. And we have a new registration system, our school that we were running and we picked it up halfway through the year. Uh, so that gave our teachers some more tools after school to make sure they're tracking for student skills. And keeping with connection, Green Box Arts Camps, amazing this year, first time in two years where we have a normal year. We get to do the full nine day classes or nine day camps. Um, and our full camp for construction arts camp, uh, which occurred at Manitou Arts Center and also up at the Green Box Campus. Uh, two integrated elementary arts classes as well as very beloved uh forty-eight hour musical. Uh, so and a lot of our teachers here uh were teachers in these camps. So it's construct. Constructing arts with Steve Bethke and Noah Wilson. Integrated arts camps were Emily Leskey. Uh, Paige Telerico, who was a student teacher. Um, and then we also had, or Myo Dance Company had two teachers. Helping with that. Forty-eight hour musical had uh Wendy Harms, Abby Steen. Um, uh, Charles Sholander, who was our musical accompanist. Um, Nicole Berry and uh Sam Bishop. Uh, working that, which is really cool. So forty-eight hour musicals. I don't know how Wendy Harms teaches it. I have no idea, but she does and all those teachers do and kudos to them. So we had ninety-five students enrolled in all of our camps, nine mentors for the elementary camps, which was huge to see those. Uh, mentors step up and connect with kids um as role models was awesome. Uh, and I want to give a special shout out to uh Noli Marath, Green Box Administrator. Helping out um as well as um Jesse Nunley helping and supporting. Um, I had to go do two weeks of training with the National Guard, of course, halfway through Green Box Arts Camp. And I left feeling very comfortable because they just had it so organized and it was rocking. It was really cool. Uh, we were at the Green Box Campus, Manitou Arts Center, the Silk District Auditorium, classes took place, um, at those places. Uh, we had eleven new Green Box teachers, so stu- uh, teachers that have never done Green Box before. And they took it and it was, they ran with it. It was really awesome. Um, and our, then our Ormyo partnership as well. And then something Noli came up with, which was really cool, was our postcards from camp. Um, so we would kind of listen in to what cool things kids were talking about during the day. And we'd send these every day for every camp to to families. And uh, so what do our students have to say about construction camp? Uh, and one day it was the feeling of freedom. You are free to do whatever you want to do with the building teamwork and houses. So that's pretty cool. Any questions about Connect fourteen, Green Box?
Sure. I know that um we now offer fewer classes um through the Connect fourteen program. And I was wondering if you could explain a little bit about why you said that's good teaching.
I think it's good for Suzie to, the historical part and Danny too. That's right. Okay. Is that a good reason?
Yeah, it really started, we started scaling back. Gosh, it was spring of twenty twenty when we talked about that moving forward. It had just, if you remember, grown and grown and grown. We had the big like posters of sixty-two different classes. We had the same, we did not see an increase in students with the increase in classes. So it's the same kids getting spread out and then you'd start a class, a kid would get so excited about it, there'd be two kids that would sign up, so the class would have to be canceled. So as we're just spreading ourselves way too thin, so we decided let's offer fewer classes, have enough, have some sort of thing for everyone. But make sure that we can actually offer these classes so we're not having to cancel and not having to kind of mess with these families' lives. So spring of twenty twenty, that was the the strategy moving forward and then kind of twenty-one came and we couldn't have Green Box. Um, I mean, Connect fourteen, but that was kind of boggling with it.
The reason I asked Suzie is because Joey Lovey was in that role and that she started to have this conversation, these really great ideas, but. To that point, it was the same percentage of students participating, but then I.
Sure. Yeah, and I would say, I would talk about COVID, obviously, moving into a normal year, making sure we are small and successful. And targeting, uh, trying to fill up classes. Even saw from fall to spring, we went from seventeen classes to sixteen, but enrollment actually grew. Um, and so it was just making sure that we were filling up these classes students can have. Um, some of these classes depend on larger class sizes, uh, like creative movement to be more successful. Because it helps to have a a big kind of dance class rather than just two or three kids and they feel kind of isolated and um so. Does that answer your question? Okay. All right. And then moving into this year, we we are uh offering more secondary options for middle school and high school. A lot of them are elementary. So that's been really cool to see. Uh, we're going to move into district wellness team. And as many of you know, uh, this doesn't say PH, PHC up here. It says district wellness team. Uh, last year, we really sat down and started to look at where we were as a wellness team or PHC at the time. And we realized that uh we do a lot of different things now than ten years ago. And so we um with with education for staff and um our opportunities, not just for students, but for staff and families. And so to better align um what we are doing and what we want to do for the future. We um started, we moved into uh kind of a title change of district wellness team to align better with our building wellness teams. And PHC still exists, but that is our Partners for a Healthy Community. That's our community group that we meet with. That is PHC. When we talk about Jane, Danny and Angela and our building co-leaders, that is wellness teams. So if that makes sense, I just wanted to pro- provide a little bit of clarity before I pass it off to Jane.
So um we always throw the slide in just to keep it fresh in your minds that. Uh, we try to do a lot with the ten components. Um, it's a widely known model. Uh, it's the whole, whole school, whole community, whole child philosophy. And we've been doing this, probably one of the first ones in the state of Colorado, honestly. Uh, we had some good pioneers starting this program. And so we like to just bring that to the forefront so that everybody knows. Uh, when our district wellness team writes ships, school health improvement plans. We live at this model right here. We do a smart source needs assessment. Every other year, we did it last year, so we skipped this year. And they work on what their goals are according to that needs assessment. Um, this is just a little bit, Danny just brought this up. Uh, PHC was Partners for Healthy Choices. I might so in the history of that, it never was a district in-school program. It was parents that got together because something happened at a party eleven years ago. And they wanted to get together to try and ensure uh less drug use at parties and things like that. So Partners for Healthy Choices was derived from that and uh we've come a long way. And just like Danny said, so the wellness is part of our uh title, but. Uh, our monthly meetings with our partners, uh, we changed that this year to Partners for a Healthy Community. We probably have twenty-five to thirty people in this room once a, once a month on Wednesdays. Our new partners this year, Catholic Charities at the bottom, Sandburn Western Camp, Amy Scott. Peak view behavioral health, Flying Pig Farm and Inside Out. So we're even having to be more. It's nice to have the collaboration with our building wellness teams. Um, we've got some great people in our schools, basically because of that meeting. Grants and allocations. This is pretty remarkable, remarkable, because everything we do in our district with wellness. Is not district funded. There's no funding coming from the district, except for a couple of salaries. So everything is funded through grants. We have a Colorado Springs Health Foundation. Uh, that will end this year and gets um in regards to the trauma response of school district informed and responsive. A lot of training because what that's around. The CDE School Health Professional Grant, uh, that is the total grant for two out of the three years. Uh, the state pulled money from that fund and then figured out after a year that why did we do that? They need it. So uh, we were, I think they took twenty and we were twenty-one and I got the call last summer that, hey, you're in for the next two years. I did find out last week that they have a new cohort seven, where cohort six. Uh, rollout, we'll know more this spring. So it's a new RFP for three more years. So that is fantastic news. The state sees a need for mental health for our students and our staff. And uh putting some money to help us initiate those moves. Manitou Springs City Allocation. We just got that again for this year. That is an awesome thing that the city does for us. I brag on this at every meeting I go to. Um, especially out of the city and people are just in awe that um the city really helps us. That funding, the thirty-five thousand goes to our building wellness teams and that does all the wellness type programs. That you'll see on the slide that's coming up. Um, it's mainly for prevention of marijuana and drug use and we tie it to protective factors. Uh, that would be like uh having a trusted adult at school, trying to get school engagement up. You know, instead of kids going home, having nothing to do, maybe getting into some trouble, keep them here and how can we engage them more? Um, last year, CDE recognized the need for some wellness grants for staff. And Danny wrote ours for the district and we were awarded eighteen hundred and U Pass wrote one and. Uh, they gained seven hundred fifty. Theirs was all uh staff. Uh, their staff lounge updates. And uh, ours went towards uh, our staff loves Adams Mountain Cafe cooking classes. And so that's what most. Um, this is a little bit about, I mentioned earlier, school building, uh, health improvement plan ships. And uh, the top row does it makes a few things that we did professionally. We had the NME, NMT foundations and applications. Um, the NME neural sequential model of education, we had seventeen in that training. Uh, the foundations and applications, which is really grassroots, basic level understanding of brain development concepts. How kids learn. I know when I got my educational degree, I didn't know this. Kids just learned and that's what we. Do happen and and it's a lot about uh the regulation relate and the reason. So uh, we had a total of fifty-one staff members. Um, the NMT is the neurosequential model of therapeutic. So we had four of our. Mental health team uh enrolled in that class and can I tell them the good news?
I shared it with them.
Oh, okay. So uh, they're kind of coming to an end and it was a long haul for them and it was a long haul for the NME people also. Danny, I mean, it was a lot of extra work, a hundred, a hundred and twenty hours prepping plus a final project of the end. And we just got word Joyce Stafford got all of her stuff in and she was just certified. As neurosequential model therapeutic. So that's really awesome. The other three are coming here quickly. So I should have news about them in about a month. Uh, Ormayo Hands Are For Holding, uh, that was with the seventh grade at middle school. That was all right. We're we're doing someone this coming year. And then starting about health and relationships. Parent connections, we did the vigilante parent program, cyber awareness. Mandy actually did one of those trainings for us. Uh, we did the really awesome staff wellness community appreciation celebration. That was down at the park in conjunction with some really nice. Uh, other entities and then I have the Adamses up there. Partners for Healthy Choices, that's the uh PHC, positive partnering and progress between MSST. And our community support. Kind of talked about that already. So these are wellness teams and these are just a list of some of the things that they got to do last year, which was nice to see the last two years. They didn't spend a lot of money because we just struggled with students and being able to do the things they wanted to do. So U Pass, just a a couple of things, definitely outdoor education. They have a really nice funny classroom. They take hikes, gratitude pumpkins. Uh, mindful Mondays, they had several guest speakers in, staff wellness, they did October. They really geared a lot of reduction in springtime, especially if the weather's bad and they're in for recess. Mustang Mike is the elementary school team, uh, smart source assessment. I think I talked about that before. They really worked hard on their indoor recess kits for teachers. Uh, they had a really great family community connection and engagement moving night. That was in May, right? And I think over two hundred people, maybe more.
And we had to cut it off.
So really some nice things. It was nice to get back and do some things with our students and our staff. Health things, uh, they do fitness cafe in the mornings with healthy breakfast. So a little bit of exercise and then kids get to eat. Something healthy, uh, promoting staff lounge healthy snacks, their enrichment classes. Uh, Tessa with Oreo again up there, take side in the garden with the staff. The high school is mind, body, spirit and uh they sponsor world language and culture night speakers. Uh, they work with Stuko on a Mustang Mustang Strong. Program and uh the staff lounge planning support, which is going on right now. Holiday health, um, that is our. Holiday program that we do. It gets really busy in October and then there's a culmination of December. Angela and I are usually up here, families come in and pick up things, but. This year, thirty-two families and a hundred and twenty-five total individuals were supported. Uh, we had twenty-nine donate gifts or money and six agencies were involved in donating money. And that was the fire department. They are there the whole day with us. Uh, Kiwanis, uh, the school district, Subvention Army West Side Care and Orlando Perpetual Health. We have a food pantry and clothing closet, just to remind everybody, that's housed right here uh in the basement of the old gym. Uh, we gave out six thousand eight hundred and twenty pounds of food and we had one thousand two hundred and five pounds donated. And usually that happens when food drives from like National Honor Society and things like. Thank you. Any questions?
No, that's a tremendous amount. Great things that are going on for the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so this is a tricky moment. How do we, John, adjust for public comment in the middle of the meeting?
I have a motion to change the agenda. Move that in, is it, there was an agenda item?
There's an agenda item and the reason I'm looking at doing this is because this person reached out on Wednesday of last week asking to speak and then they went.
So you move, was there on that, on the initial agenda item that you moved through, but it was. There was no one there, so you. Resurface that agenda item.
I guess we can move E one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been motioning to move E one.
Most of the movie, you won. After E five and before H one.
Johnson, nice. Moen.
Hi.
Karen.
Hi.
Vittab.
Hi.
Okay, my little statue. And I'm going to read this really, try to read this really quickly. Um, public participation is over meetings during times of general public comment. Irregular meeting comments and questions may deal with a topic related to the course conduct of schools. Comments at special meetings that may be related to the call of the meeting during times of public comments. This is agenda items. Comment comments shall be confined to the topic of the agenda item being. Speakers may offer some type of information at school operations and programs that are in charge to exercise their speech right responsibly. The board in turn gives a discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted in executive session. Convergent for speakers, comments from the audience are limited to three minutes per speaker with no immediate response from the board except when deemed necessary by the president. A single spokesperson should be selected by groups or organizations desiring to address the board and an agenda topic in order to avoid presenting. When there is a large number of speakers to be hired for signing ops, we shorten the time for each individual speaker and make limit. The mark speakers, orderly conduct, the meetings are not public forum meetings, they're meetings held in public. All meetings except effective sessions will be open to public meetings. Orderly conducted meetings, it's not commenced unless discussion from the audience. Speakers will be recognized by the board president and may be, and they may object to school programs. The board will not commit in public session in the expression of personal complaint about school personnel, nor against any person connected with the system. During time allotted for public comments, persons may speak or establish policy or other matters under consideration by the board, except for personal matters concerning specific controls of students. The discussion of all personnel matters to be conducted. Speakers will not be permitted to participate in gossip, make disambiguation marks, use a piece of other language. Speakers will be advised that their comments must be limited to items with the votes of directly to the board. The board president will maintain prerogative to discontinue any presentation violates team public participation guidelines. And then I just want to reiterate that we did make this adjustment because you did request that you be allowed to speak on Wednesday. And so we were aware that you were here. You didn't just walk in the door and we moved everything around for this moment.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You want me to type it?
Um, yeah.
When you're ready.
Hello, I'm, I am pleased to hear that there are so many having a great start to the school year. New teachers and staff have been welcomed with open arms and the students feel supported and excited for the school year. I am here representing Stand Up For Manitou and wanted to share some updates. As we have shared, we engaged with a third party firm to conduct a survey of former district staff who left within the last two school years. We want to thank all who assisted with this important project and we are grateful to all who participated. This was a monumental endeavor. We have requested to share the survey results and other pertinent data at the September 12th Board of Education meeting. Thank you Natalie for your work on this. We look forward to hearing from you by the end of this week. On behalf of D14 parents and families, we value and appreciate each of you serving on the Manitou Springs Board of Education and your commitment to the students and families of the district. At every turn, Stand Up For Manitou wants to work in collaboration with the Board of Education for the betterment of the district. Thank you very much.
And I will be in touch regarding your. All right. We'll see review. So like. Sorry. Oh, we've been working on this one for a long time. So I think for second reading, uh, there were no changes after the first reading. We approve all of them and one. We can. Does anyone have any questions or? Would you like to allow a particular room to discuss for? Make a motion to get a second.
And I just add, uh, we do, uh, we're waiting on the handbook for this to be, once this is finalized, then the handbook will be updated with these policies. So just want to give you that.
Great, have a motion.
Remove approval of all the G policies with in each one.
That it? Any discussion before we take a vote? All right. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Vidovic.
Hi.
Nice work. That's a lot of work to the board. The John here advising too.
A lot of policy.
Yeah.
Right, let's look at policy JLC.
So I, this is out of order from when we would typically review this, but because of some of the circumstances we're seeing around Fentanyl and in schools and the communities, uh, we know that there's just more access. I believe that this is opportunity for us to, to think about this now. And I put it as a first reading just so you could see it. And it is boilerplate from Casby and very similar. I added District 11's, like internal procedures. You could see that. Before we move forward, I wanted to see, you know, kind of get feedback from the board to do all the approval of this moving forward. If you do, then our work will be, um, really to get, get this to you before the next, for the next work session. Uh, what the internal procedures will look like. We, we do have to have, uh, orders in order to have it on campus. Um, the state can help us with that, but I just wanted to, to not go too slow on this one and wait till the spring. So more of a just a discussion to around your perspective of it.
Does Casby have like a boilerplate? So it looks like we've got kind of the stock administering medications on students, which was, you know, last revised in 2016. Then obviously I think Narcan or Meloxone, uh, is the, the brand name, not the trade name. Uh, adding that on there, there's obviously there's no meat in the policy for how it's going to be used. It looks like most of that meat is in the D11, uh, policy is the plan. I guess I have two questions. The plan is to try to integrate that into Word form. I guess I'll ask one question at a time.
Yeah, that's the goal is that well, that boilerplate to say that we can move forward with, uh, the orders. And then the second thing is that our health team would produce something similar, but would meet our needs as a school district for these internal processes. So it wouldn't become part of our, our administrative policy. You could make it an exhibit, but I don't think it's necessary just in case things change. So we would just refer it into our different handbooks or the online website. So that's the feedback. If you all are saying this is something we want to move with, then on our, in our next work set, work session, we'll add as an in-between before you have a second reading. I don't know for sure if we can get all of the orders from the state in time for approval, but we would want to have that in motion. So.
I was just going to ask if there was any consideration to take it before Dak and just getting their thoughts from parents and stakeholders. There's anybody else?
Have, I, we can. I haven't heard any pushback for the, the Norcan. I think when we start talking about the policy around administering medicinal marijuana by non caregivers, that could be a definitely good, good spot for that. But I haven't heard that released.
Yeah, it's a way different topic. Narcan's been around for way over 30 years, like Steve said, just last week and it works very, very, uh, effectively. Um, one thing, so it looks like in the D11 policy, um, they've got some things in there that are kind of like CPR things that we talked about this months ago. Is everybody in the district CPR certified? That should be certified. So that would be, you want to have like a basic level of knowledge. Many get Narcan is really safe if you give it to somebody that doesn't need it. It just means nothing's going to happen because they've got bleeding in their brain or their sugars to thousands or whatever it is. Um, so that really won't hurt them at all. So Narcan is a very safe drug. But we have basic training of the staff that I think is a state guideline for CPR and those sorts of things. Is that in place?
Eric for where we are. And then we have a new athletic trainer who's also going to be training as a, as a, as a trainer.
Yeah, I just actually know it. Uh, give me Dave about, he's offered a couple of sessions already and we have three or four more on the books. Um, that we're going to be planning to operate over the next month and a half or so. Uh, so we're, we're well on our way. I would say that that's, that you're, that's true right now, your question, but within that timeframe will be, um, you know, in a much better place. So.
Okay, just to go back to Janie's safety thing with drilling, how important that is. You don't want to be the first time you give somebody rescue breath beyond a person that's, you know, not recessed or entering or using an Ambu bed for the first time. It's really not complicated, but it's nice to practice that stuff. So I know Narcan's great. We should definitely move forward with this. There's no downside that I can see.
The one thing, nothing that we want to process internally is who gets trained to administer it? Um, is it just the front office to start and then we kind of roll it out in a different way? So Officer Strider does carry Norcan with her, but she's not always on campus. So uh, that, that's some of the details we want to look through. Who is going to be, um, able to.
Go on every campus?
Uh, what's that?
Every campus.
We were just starting with middle school and high school. I love some feedback to you all. Uh, we haven't in our area schools, or as I know, learned about elementary students. But it would, if you openly, but would heard, it just means more training.
I wonder, I mean, if there was an adult.
Adult.
There was a parent that we need to, I guess.
Yeah.
What would we do? We have it for kids of middle school, run over parent. But I mean, I'm just trying to think through all kinds of scenarios, the same one I asked about that. Um, not because I think whether we hear or haven't heard concerns about it, is, is there any just thoughts on it?
I think it's, I, I mean, if we're going to do it, I think it's not a bad idea. It's been experienced. Just anything about U-Pass first responders are much further than, uh, our other schools. So.
I think it's just going to become more and more readily available in the coming years. So the further we can get coordinated on this, the better. Yeah, I did notice in the language, in the first paragraph, it just says, you know, again, it's applied with this student. And later on, it says a student or any other person. And I'm just wondering if we could add and any other person. Student. Cause I think it is just that idea that. Anyone?
I like that for the second reading. So what I think I hear, make sure I understand that we'll, well, with our leadership team, we're meeting tomorrow with health team. We'll build out this, start to build out this protocol for the September 1st meeting. We'll have the protocol. You can ask some, some further questions and then by the next regular meeting, we can maybe a second reading. Except there. Thanks. And then.
We were just asking about, and I know Jack, you say, well, I don't have a concern about it, but what we have a concern about it doesn't mean that that may not, some parents may not, because you haven't heard, doesn't mean there's something. And it seems to me that these may be different drug types and uses that we're talking about for sure. But it doesn't, but it seems relatively consistent to bring it through Dak and the state. If you, you hear anything, and that's the purpose of Dak is to have constituency in the public. Have some input on it, just to push things that we're not thinking about.
There is this Dak meeting on September 8th, so we could, uh, bring that up. Topic to say in between this reading and that reading, what concerns and also messaging to families. Why are we doing that? We haven't, at this time, had any incident, but we want to be prepared. I know at least two districts have, have approved this and they're not counting. Okay, I'll bring that to you. Thank you. Approval of that first reading with that change or any other person?
Make a motion to approve the first reading, move it on to the second reading, policy JLC. Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Vidovic.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this up. Okay. Thanks. If you all can, do you all have your paper? Did we do your homework? I'm having it right now. I did it. I just didn't do the final.
My head is not working.
Okay.
So I might score it or I can email to you right now or however you want it.
Yeah, I would like to keep it. Um, I don't know. I just want to write your.
You're welcome.
I don't have. I don't. Need names for. That's a work on this right now. A minute. All right. Would you like to take a quick time and break? Will you do that? Can I do that? All right. Go on. Go on.
Not later on. Hey, we have a clear top three. So.
Oh, yeah, that's helpful.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like to um have you all accept a motion um to Camera Bartlett, Christie Marie Butler, and Matthew Brody um forward to the next room.
I make a motion to do that.
I've accepted that motion.
Okay, um, we will have these um on record. I will give these to Mo's if I get to hang out.
Okay.
Give it to Kendall. Um, so if anyone has any questions, look at the numbers there. Do you have any questions or concerns with our process?
It's very straightforward.
Yeah, I think it's numerically sound and um they could speak both well that it was a clear.
Yeah.
It was, it was clear, but also I'm really excited to see if folks interested in this. And um again, it was really enthusiasm. I don't think that we could come on, which is a really nice thing.
It is nice that hopefully that people continue to be involved in a variety of ways.
So between now and September first, somebody will vet to make sure that they meet the criteria as far as whatever address and whatever else has happened.
For residents, if they're registered voters. Yeah.
You want to do that?
Yeah. I just need to get, I can work Kendall to get all the information. And we want to come up with that, the tough questions. Next round. So I hope you can give us a thought to um. So uh can I just uh make sure I'm, we're all, since that's next Monday is the interview. Oh, sorry. Oh, next, sorry, next Thursday. My theory on my calendar, we'll obviously work with.
Thursday to the twenty fifth.
Next Thursday.
Twenty hundred first. Okay, oh, right.
Five o'clock in the cell phone.
Five o'clock in the cell phone.
Had to order big with that minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Depends on the budget storm. Might be the same.
Flush and so maybe send, yeah.
So I guess I did the thing. Would you like the, would you like me to reach out to these folks or?
Okay, or you, whatever.
Appropriate for Kendall.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just confirm for the order of that. We have a work session and we have several items. I put um interview board candidates first, so they can leave and then we have other topics. And then you all need to stay for a special meeting to select that board member during that meeting. Is that what you all are thinking? Um, and then we swear the first meeting and on the twelfth. So I, we have a work session and a little special meeting.
Yeah, I've heard your meeting to vote on who the the top question.
Or you could do especially, you could vote the night of the regular meeting, or you could have a special meeting that same night. I think just courtesy to that individual. If you don't want to do that.
Um, will we have rating points again for the questions that we asked? That way we get it's not kind of a huge discussion about minute points, but rather again.
And what is the best way, I think, for us to legally have a discussion about questions that a board doc that we can all edit? Is that, how do you do that? Um. Cause I don't want to discuss the questions here. It's obviously still probably news. Right? Maybe the way, just two, two board members, I can, we can let's work this out together.
Yes, it's about the four board members for who, or?
I just want to make sure we ask the right, the right question. Um, this, but these were very basic questions, right? So it was really fun to take these and discern a form. I guess you're comfortable with that and two board members would be, or you all can just, whatever you want to put together. I'm happy to kind of contribute some.
I would send you questions and have you fair amount.
Like we do with the river.
Okay.
So we're gonna send we'll send you uh any questions that we would like to throw into the hat.
And I'll share that and I'll share those questions and then.
When you want to buy hands, when you want to buy, probably get to collate them and get them ready for that.
I think the big thing is that I want to get them out to you so that if there's a question, there's like, do you look at, if you all ask me the same question. Which I think is unlikely, but um, what they get that. So um let's see. So can you get them to me by Friday? And then I will have everything to you by Monday.
Friday, Friday closing business.
Sure. And then um and then I'll get the Ruberke and question back to you on Monday. And then if there's any change in the Jeffman's questions, I'll time to make those. I think two is plenty per, I mean, I think we'll probably end up asking. And then a follow up question.
How much time do you think we'll have with each candidate?
I mean, I meant to say twenty one minutes. Do you think more? We're just asking.
Hey, one, one of you on the time run uh meeting.
When Kendall calls, prepare for about twenty to thirty minutes question.
And then leave question, time for them to ask questions.
I think the last question, be doing English for us and separate that.
Very, we can ask if you would like us to know.
When Kendall talks to them, are we gonna have her tell them you'll be on it? I mean, five oh five, I guess would be the first one and three, five thirty and five thirty five and tell them what spot they have for them. I'm sitting around for an hour.
And that's the plan. If for some reason they can't get here for work or there's some reason.
Okay. We're just so they don't have to be here while the people are, you know, to try to find them all the way to the cell phone.
I think it'd be fair to those to draw their names out of such a random order somehow.
We can't make that five, in which case we would improve their schedule.
It would be back, it would be awesome.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so do you have any need?
Yeah, obviously we can.
Excellent. Again, thank you, everyone.
I'll take a vote on that. I don't think we, oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Uh, Johnson.
Hi.
Moen.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
Vidovic.
Hi.
Okay, I'm kind of, I will leave this. Okay. And again, I just want to thank everyone for their emphasis. You're very fortunate. We'll just leave it updated. Sorry now. Um, Elizabeth and I are going to the Casby dinner on Thursday. It's anyone, I don't think anyone's.
It's here in town, so that's nice. It's not the bottom of.
That's great studio.
Yes.
Yeah, I was thinking of going. Yeah, we'll see.
You might.
You know, I had thought about it, but I can put it on my calendar. So I think probably two weeks, so.
Let me know if you do.
Okay, yeah, I'm like, oh, just break down the street.
Okay, what's up? Uh, self reflection. We have also kind of added like communication. It's just any communication. With opportunities to share or extend or prove as a board. Um uh, the last meeting I discussed, um, putting together some kind of PEXI bulletin article from all of us with updates and you had said which ones, I know you have one other date that we discussed, there was that.
For which update? Sorry.
Just a board update that we'll share in the PEXI bulletin. I don't know if there was, uh, if there's any, any reason we should delay or fresh. I know.
No, do you want to run it as a pad in the bulletin that we've run or as an editorial?
I don't know if we all have any preference one way or another, but I think it's just an addition.
When were we looking at?
You know, I, whatever, I have this data in my head and it makes no sense. So um I mean, we can announce the new.
That's what I was wondering. Wait till we have a.
And I would certainly love to reflect on the quality as well, so that uses plenty of time. So I'll work on a draft with you know, fill in the blank. And it is um that we can, we can, we can think. Um as far as a goal get it out, I mean I mean, maybe we can get it in the paper on the fifteenth of September. Um if we're ready. So I guess it's a lot of it's just depending on how comfortable we have the language and.
Sounds good.
She's been needing it on at twelve on Mondays.
Oh, at twelve on Mondays. Yeah. Okay, I'll see if I can tell her.
If she knows.
Share with her and say.
She knows like how long it is.
But it's just gonna be in by Tuesday. I don't think, I think, is that correct?
She's moved. But I feel like if I could get the bulk of the article there, I think she can probably work with this, but I'll, I'll talk to her. So yeah, so I'll, I'll try, I'll have a drink for you all to get. Well, there's that. I'd also talk about the idea of what do you think about having just um a casual dinner with our new board member and you know, just the six of us. To kind of have a casual, get to know you.
Sure.
Um, or.
Yeah, but we it would still have to be, yeah, I was gonna say we'd have to post it and have it in the public. Maybe we should uh reserve table maybe at Adams and if people want to come watch a scene, monitor us, they're welcome to. And it would give Adams business, I'm just saying.
And my goal would be for us to not release.
Yeah.
That's why people would monitor. And I mean, since we're not talking about business, if we want to invite and enjoy the time.
So no one begins the dinner.
No.
I'm always in favor of dinner.
Okay, we can just. Okay, um, those are just sort of my, my thoughts about that.
That'd be good. Um, you know, with some think moving about a bit and I think pulling together and according to fashion and uh getting our group to, to take off with some new, new roles and uh some new people. This one.
One new board member is a whole new one.
A prospect. I think you're good. Great.
Great. Okay, so this concludes um our regular meeting. Now we need to move into section. Let me see. Okay. I will use those. Um, I move pursuant to follow or revise statutes title twenty four, article six, section four oh two at subsection four B to go into executive session to conference with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal question particular matter that is to be discussed behind closed doors is related to recent legal advice regarding possible next steps regarding in correspondence needs. J S. Um, in attendance will be um the domain, um Tina Vidovic, Natalie Johnson, Jack, Jack, Karen. And John Stanner. That, that surprise.